Can't see me. All right, I will call the meeting to order at six o'clock. This is the meeting of the Chesapeake Beach Planning and Zoning Commission. For whatever reason, my camera doesn't work on this Zoom session, but it does on other Zoom sessions, other groups that I participate with. So I'm not sure what the problem is. In any case, so you don't need to see me, I don't think. And we can proceed with our published agenda, which was first of all, the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second it.
Chairman Brown, I would like to propose an amendment to the agenda.
Go ahead.
I would like to add to the agenda the items that I sent over email for consideration as part of the discussion of the above.
Okay. Is there any, is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
All right. Let's vote on that amendment, all in favor of that, of adding the, does everybody have those items that were sent in addition to the chairman's list?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Rotke does, Commissioner Larson, you have them?
Yes.
Commissioner Beralt?
Yes, sir.
All right, and Commissioner Greengold?
Yes, I do.
All right, so everybody has them. And so we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Can you oppose? No one's opposed, if you're unanimous, we'll add those to the end of the agenda. Are there any other motions on the agenda? I thought maybe Commissioner Greengold might, but...
I actually would like to make an emerg, can you hear me okay, because I'm in California?
Yes, we can. I can.
I, I, thank you. There are several things. I would like to see if we can make an emergency amendment to the 290 code and make motions tonight to take the town council. And those would be considering the height limit issue and the housing in the maritime district, those two items. I would like to see if we could make motions and carry them forward to a discussion or else taken to the town. So we can probably take that one to the town council immediately. But I'm, I'm feeling as though we have... I'm sorry?
Can you be specific about what you're talking about sending to the town council?
The amendment, okay, we already made a motion to, about the height limit change for the, for the building codes. We already made that amendment probably six months ago. Correct, Chris? Correct me if I'm wrong, but we can make that motion.
There was a motion six months ago that was withdrawn. That was before two of the commissioners currently on the commission were present. So they need to be refreshed on what that is.
Okay, all right, okay. So it's depending on how the commission feels tonight or bringing them back next, next time and put them on the agenda, I guess is what we'll have to do then, since they were, before some of you were on this, kind of confused on timing here. So what we will do then, I will withdraw the change of the agenda. We'll just go ahead and at the end, add that to the agenda for next meeting. Is that okay with us?
So we have, we have one amendment to the agenda. Are there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of amending the agenda?
Aye.
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 Okay, anyone oppose? So all in favor, all right, moving ahead. The first thing on the agenda was discussion of a schedule to complete the comprehensive plan in the package that was distributed from the town. We had two things, one was kind of PowerPoint schedule that Chris put together. And the second one was expanding that schedule to put, which I did, to put some more meat on the bones, if you will, about what it, what it meant, what we would have to do to achieve that schedule. Let's see, there are a couple of things about it that I, I think we need to think about. And the first is that it sets deadlines or proposed deadlines for commission initiated changes so that we can decide when we're going to finish or whether we're going to continue, well, set some point where we will, will actually finish considering commission changes. It also sets deadlines for when the commission receives materials like the draft and public comment, lists of public comments that we have to consider at, at the public hearing. It assumes that deliberations will be completed basically in one, maybe two meetings. And the dates are really objectives, subject to change. But if we miss a date in there, it cascades down and delays the end result, which is the zoning changes and the comprehensive plan sent to the town council. So that's the schedule that I propose that we execute. Is there any discussion on that schedule?
I have a question.
Yeah, Commissioner Rotke.
My one question is, I assume that we will be sending a copy of this to the state simultaneously? Because we have that 60-day review too, and I didn't see it anywhere on the schedule. I just wanted to make sure, understand when in this process we have to do that.
Chris, you want to answer that question?
Yes, good question, Jan. We, step number five, publish the comprehensive plan draft for, for public review. On the same day, it's sent to the state.
Got it.
And to Calvert County and to North Beach.
So the public view is not just the pub, not just our citizens, but the county, state, and neighboring town?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you very much.
Um, can I ask who it is sent to in Calvert County and North Beach?
Well, as a practical matter, we send it to the Department of Planning at the county, the planning director. At North Beach, we would typically send it to the mayor's office or to the town clerk with a letter requesting review and comments.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. What I assume is that we, if they have comments on it, that would all be considered at the public comment meeting that we have at the end of 60 days.
Yes, the public hearing, they, they either appear in person or submit written comments within that 60-day period.
Okay, got it.
Chairman Brown?
Oh yes, go ahead.
Um, so first of all, I'd like to comment on some, well, actually two things that I've read in the news lately. Of course, I think it's important for this board to express our condolences and gratitude to the Donovan family and to Gerald Donovan for all that he's done for this town and providing us this foundation that we're planning on. And I know we've discussed, you know, some plans that we maybe disagree on, but there's a lot to agree on, and he left a very good foundation for us to plan upon. And I think it's important for this board to acknowledge that. May Rotke. And then, does anybody else want to comment on that, or?
Well, we're discussing the schedule. If you'd like to make a motion to send a note to the Donovans, we can do that, I would suggest after we finish discussing the schedule.
Sure, no problem. So, so my second news-related comment does have to do with the schedule. And it starts with a comment that Chris made last session. Chris, you implied that our board and our changes were costing the town money, and you ended up being quoted in the newspaper saying that. And, and the proceeding spree left the impression that our deliberations are costing the town money. And I, I found that that, you know, I, I let that comment slide because it looked like you didn't feel very well. But the actual truth is, is that we never get anything on time. And that is something that causes our meetings to be less productive than they could have been. And it also prevents us from providing our function to review and to assess whether or not the plan that's being put forth will be favorable to our community. And everybody plays a role in that. You can get us our materials on time for us to make destructive assessment of it. When you don't, you know, we, we aren't, you aren't accountable to us and, and we can't direct you, we can't hold you responsible for doing that. It is a professional courtesy that you should give us. And despite the moratorium, we got the land use section a day before or a day of, I can't remember, but it was one of those two things, same with the implementation section. And right now, we're being asked to set a date to put this whole entire plan out for public review. And our, our neighbors and, you know, people in town are going to ask us about it. And we're expected to give assurance that it is a good plan. And in this plan, we've erased a good portion of our code, and we still have yet to see how you wrote that in the plan. And we don't see the code that you plan on replacing, the code that you erased. So I would say that I don't need, you know, necessarily the story that the Planning and Zoning Commission is costing the town money corrected, but I do need the problem corrected. I, I really think the problem needs to be corrected, and we need to see this plan in its entirety and have a meeting after we have this plan in hand, and then we can decide when the public hearing will be. And if we are erasing code in that plan, I want to know what we're replacing that code with. Because this is just going to be more, more circles, more fog. We've dedicated an exorbitant amount of time to trying to get a handle on this administrative process. And we're all professionals in some capacity. And I don't ask my colleagues to to do things last minute based upon what I owe them. I would never ask somebody to stand by something that they couldn't see. So I, I think that I don't necessarily want to set these dates right now. What I would like to see happen is for us to go through our deliberations and then you to write the plan. And where you've erased code, for example, in the RPC zone, show us what you're proposing the code to be. Because we didn't need to erase the code. And I can't give anybody assurance that this is a good plan if I don't know what kind of code it is. So I had a little problem with that line of thought, and I hope that 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 narrative doesn't get run around, that this board is costing the town money, because it's not. This, this board is, it's a stellar board, and we're most often working with last-minute information.
Okay, is there any more comments? Discussion?
I just want to support Lori's comment and opinion on this. I, I think, you know, I know for me, I've only been a year on the commission, and it's, it's really amazing to me how much work and knowledge and reading and being aware of the impact of what we're doing. And I think it's really important, and I, and I place a lot of importance on it. And, you know, I, I, I think the, the perception that we are costing the town money because we are, you know, excessively deliberating or discussing, I think that it certainly doesn't help us in the achievement of completing the, the plan as well as our work. And I think, you know, months ago, during one of the meetings, I found that my integrity was being challenged as, as what part of, was I benefiting from just having the opinion that I did? And, and I think it's really important that that the, the town is really aware that, you know, we, we have, we are motivated and driven to do the best for the town and to have a complete and thorough comprehensive plan in this case, that wasn't, isn't arbitrary and isn't spontaneous, but it's been well thought and not only the immediate impact, but the future outlay of that. So I, I just want to offer my comment.
Okay, anyone else? So I wrote this schedule. Does anyone want to make a motion to accept the schedule? Okay. Hearing none, the schedule is not...
Larry, 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 can you hear, can you hear me, Larry?
Uh, no, I can hear you, I can't see.
Oh, you can't see me either? Okay, Larry, I just had a question about, okay, third one down. You're talking about meeting, discuss zoning map and text amendments and set date for public hearing. Are those text amendments the ones that we're discussing as far as the immediate the, the immediate text amendments in the back of the... I'm trying to get to the word here.
You're talking about number six on the schedule?
Right, I'm talking about, I guess my question is, which text amendments are we referring to on that? Are we referring, which ones are we referring to, Chris? Do you know what I'm referring to there?
Well, that's from Chris's schedule, so it's from, it's...
Right, I'm asking Chris.
...text amendments to the zoning code.
Right, I'm just, I'm asking Chris which text amendments he's referring to and which ma, zoning maps. Are they all the zoning maps? And are they the text amendments from the... Well, which ones, let me just ask you which ones they are. Can you tell me which ones they are?
Well, I, I imagine that they would be the ones that address the priorities that the, the commission has been discussing, like the building height, uses permitted in the various districts, the purpose statements of the new districts that are being created, like the RV1 and RV2, the whole set of text changes. But I would probably I'd have to kind of qualify that a little bit, because I don't know that it's possible to go through with the planning commission and completely update the zoning ordinance. But the priorities that the commission is focused on is what is most relevant to, to this point. I mean, this is what the point is speaking to, is those issues that are most relevant to being done before the moratorium is lifted. Now, there are other things, like we've talked about possibly revising the parking standards, for instance, in the zoning district if there is an accessory apartment. That was a little more detailed and take more time, and I don't think that could be accomplished in this tight timeframe.
Okay, so that's what my question was. So under implementation, are you talking about immediate-term text amendments? And then you're referring to the longer-term text amendments. In the intermediate-term text amendments, you're including the building height, and you're including also the elimination of housing units in the maritime center and then various other ones. And I'm just wondering which that would go along with all those text amendments? And will we have those and, or how do you want those presented? But we haven't really, I mean, those were the two things I was referring to early that Larry was just mentioning, that the newer commissioners hadn't... I was going to introduce them tonight, but then thinking if two of our members haven't really had discussion, that it wasn't really fair to just throw that on them tonight. But my question to you going back then is, are you referring to the immediate-term text amendments? Is that what you're identifying here?
Yes.
As three, as September 22nd?
Yes, Cindy, yeah, just the, the immediate...
So then, so then theoretically, we need to have the words or the verbiage for these... I mean, I was thinking I was going to have to write them up, but are, do you write these up, Chris? Or do we write them up? Or how do they get into a format that we can then send to the town council for adoption and for, you know, making that amendment to the, the code?
Yeah, I have fully intended to write them up, and of course, the building height issues are addressed already. That, that ordinance has been drafted.
Except that, except that when you have it, well, by the motion that I had originally done, is that what you're referring to, or, because what you, what you have in, in the back here, I'm sorry if I'm taking a long time, but this really matters to me a lot. What you have in the back here under immediate-term text amendments, you have, you know, just a generalized, reduce your level, maximum building height fee, but you don't have the details of, at the, you know, the original graded form level, or you don't have, you don't have some of the details that I had in my motion. So that's why I'm asking, where do we get, do we use that motion? Do we write up other, you know, other words? What, what do we do here?
The implementation chapter is, is just a set of recommendation, recommendations so that someone reading the plan can see what topics that the commission has prioritized. They're not meant to be an extensive list of, or the actual detailed wording of any of these topics. So, you know, I, I just, I just wrote it the way I wrote it, Cindy, but if, if it needs further clarification, again, this is just a bullet list of the priorities, not meant to be the actual language.
But going back to your timeframe, the time, the time milestones that you have written down here, on August 25th, we're supposed to have a meeting to discuss zoning map and text amendments and set the date for the public hearing. I'm just asking you, what are the text amendments? What are the, which zoning maps and which text amendments are we going to be talking about? And where do they come from? Are you going to be writing them up? And do we preview them at a time, or how does that work?
I would refer to the implementation chapter. That's provided for you to see what it is that are the priorities. And the priorities are building height, there's land uses and purpose statements for the new districts, and the zoning map would be the new zoning lines creating the districts.
Okay, so you're not saying that the actual possible code change... You're, you're saying that the and they're not actual code changes you could send to the town council to have them vote on? So that's, you're not talking about that then? Do you see why I'm, I'm a little confused? I'm a little confused on what you mean by text amendments? Discuss text amendments? What, and, and when you say text, so August 25th, we're supposed to be discussing the text amendments? So do I come back and review that motion of the 35-foot height limit and we go over that again? Do we make up a a motion about the, eliminating the housing and residential use in maritime? What do, how do we, what do we go forth and do on August 25th?
Okay, you mean August 20, August 19th would be the first discussion?
Okay, it says, I see August, on the second row, okay, the first one has August 12th, the second one has August 25th. Meeting, discuss zoning map and text amendments and set date for public hearing.
Are you referring to the, the document that's on the screen right now? Okay, so Cindy, that's, that was a guidance, but it's been preempted by the chairman's...
Okay. This is more... Okay, you're doing that one. Okay, I'm doing, I'm doing this one, and you guys are doing that one.
Right.
On the 25th...
Chris, I believe Cindy held up the schedule that you sent out, that you laid out with the line, bar lines across it.
Right.
You know what I'm referring to here?
Yeah, I absolutely do.
Okay, it says revise August 3rd, and it was on our, it was on our, in our agenda pack. Man, I'm getting confused here now. So I guess my question again is, and I guess it kind of goes along with what Lori is saying. I think, I use, I don't feel like we're near completion at all, and yet we're trying to accomplish a lot by the next meeting. And I in particular think that because we're, we're a little behind on, on what we're accomplishing, that we need to get some of these amendments that we want to have changed. We should do that very quickly because we're running out of time with this moratorium. And that is why I originally was thinking we should present them tonight, but again, it's, it looked as though on your schedule, you were going to do that next, next meeting. So I thought, well, maybe next meeting, we will go ahead and do it next meeting and, and have this all finalized as far as these text amendments that we could send to the town council and actually make amendments in the town code itself. But is that not what this, this was about in this
So the, the agenda here, Cindy, assumes that the planning commission completes its deliberations on August 19th at, at the next meeting.
Well, the...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It assumes that we complete this, the items that we know about today and that the next meeting, if there are any, a few left, that we would complete those and then vote on the comprehensive plan. It's an aggressive schedule. But that's August 25th. My list there, if you look at it, says on number six would be where the zoning administrator sends the zoning map and text changes to the commission so that we'd have a week to look at them before the meeting on the 25th and to consider them, gives the commission some time to digest them before considering them. But the commission just rejected that schedule, so we're, we're kind of out to lunch. I, I have a question though, Chris. Set, setting, is, is this 35-foot height limit? And the, the plans to restrict... And the the plans to restrict. Residential use in the maritime district. Is that consistent with the current, the existing, the active comprehensive plan? That from 2010 and 2000?
No, no, it's not.
And can we propose things that are inconsistent with the current comprehensive plan?
Yes, the comprehensive plan is a guide, it's not a legal document. The commission can at any meeting. Provided on the agenda. Propose text amendments, the zoning ordinance.
Okay, and we would need to hold. 30 day hearing or public comment period and then a hearing on each of those amendments, correct?
Technically and legally, the the planning commission is not required to hold a public hearing. But it has been the practice for a long time that the planning commission holds public hearings on text amendments. Before transmitting them to the mayor and council. But it's not necessary. According to the zoning regulations.
Okay.
So it's not necessary, you could just go right from a. Review of an agenda item like the agenda items is a proposed text amendment. You could make a determination after deliberating and agree to transmit it to the mayor and council with a positive recommendation. They have to hold a public hearing, of course.
Okay, so. Is there any more discussion on? General schedule issues?
Chairman Brown.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So I would like to make a proposal of how we can go about this. And I propose that. I I like what you included that we at least get a week to review what Chris has wrote in the comprehensive plan. That is very necessary. I think we can all do it in a week, we've we've done most things in a day. But what I would like to propose is that Chris has, you know, suggested whole district name changes. And. I want to know how this comprehensive plan works. So along with that, what I would like to see is what Chris is going to propose. Our zoning code change be. Because it could be very, you know, the effect of our comprehensive plan. Is just going to be hanging out there, and we can go around in circles for days and weeks.
Months.
You know. On the code, and so I would like to know how that is going to work because.
You're using, you're using a lot of articles, that and this, and if you could be more specific about what you're you're saying, because it's ambiguous to me.
Thank you, Chairman. What I would like to see is along with the draft comprehensive plan. I would like to see the proposed code changes that Chris had in mind.
Are you suggesting that we that all of that be a package before the commission completes its work on the comprehensive plan?
Before we put it to public review, yes, I would like to know what we are. Trying to do with the code. Because we've we've erased the code by changing the district name.
May I address that, please? We have not erased the code, Krista Kubiak has not erased the code. This draft does nothing to the existing code, and there's no intent to erase the code. This plan makes recommendations for amendments to the zoning code that would be made by the commission. And the recommended by the commission and made by the mayor and council. But there are no changes to the code made by this policy document that's called the comprehensive plan. This is a guide, you're providing a guide to the mayor and council for how to adopt zoning changes.
Well, Chris, there's a lot in there, there's there's a lot of specific recommendations about parking. There's. A whole. Residential plan community district that changed to resource conservation, so it's very important what that resource conservation code is going to look like. Any kind of. Parking changes, it's important to know what those are going to look like. And. I just don't know how this plan is going to work, and if you you. Obviously, if you wanted to change all the district names. You would have had something in mind for what you wanted to do, I just want to see it.
I've not wanted to change the district name, and this is the planning commission's plan, and the commission has never at any time said, we want to change the district names. Except for changing the residential zone into residential village into residential village one and two.
Well, what's cottage cluster?
It's a land use designation, we've mentioned this many times, it's a it's a policy that says that the the. The the pattern, overall pattern for this particular community has this type of character, and it's worth preserving. The zoning is the is the law, and we're not changing the zoning until the plan is adopted. That's simply how it works, the zoning follows the the plan. The changing the land use plan, the future land use plan map that we've been talking about for quite a while now. That is, that is just a recommendation for change in development policy and land use policy. That that is not a zoning map. It is a guide, it is is not the zoning map.
I I just don't. See why we wouldn't just do this at once, that's what the council has asked for. That would make this plan make sense to us so that we could understand what is going to happen in it. It shouldn't be that hard, it's writing code. But I mean, if we didn't change the district names, we could be crossing out and editing from the code we have. And it would have been a lot faster.
I think what Chris is saying is that we we're the ones that will be writing the code to comply and be consistent with. The plan that we write. Not that, and and it's already said earlier that what we can propose. Like the 35 foot height limit, which is not consistent with the current comprehensive plan. That we could propose that anyway. So it's it's up to the commission what these changes to the code. Or what how they would be proposed, of course, it's up to the town council whether they adopt them or not.
Okay, so are we saying that we are proposing the code or that Chris is proposing the code? Because I proposed a district description for the maritime zone. And Chris was supposed to look into it, and I haven't seen it again. But those district descriptions matter. Because if the resource conservation description says. One house for five acres is allowed, and it's a it's a by right phrasing, well, then we have a problem. And. I would just like to know how these things work. And how they're going to work.
Any other planning commission members? Have a similar type of. Questions about this?
You know, so could we go around to the commission and ask them whether they are similarly concerned? Now, let's start out with Commissioner Greengold. Apparently, your volume or your microphone is not.
Sorry, I'm in California, electronic issues, I'm so sorry. I get confused because I feel, I mean, Laurie has got a point, I feel the thing come in late. I feel like I haven't gotten my hands wrapped around some of the material on time. And I am a little confused about what we are changing and what we're not changing and what. You know, like some of these code amendments, I I know I want certain things changed and the change within this moratorium period of time. It looks like we may be getting delayed on that, so I am a little confused about timing of things, getting. Getting information in on time, so I am, yeah, I'm a little confused, absolutely, I am.
What other questions the members have? Anybody else? Because I could really take a few moments to just give a background and explain how zoning and planning work in Maryland.
Yeah, Chris, I I guess. I'm confused somewhat about the relationship between the comprehensive plan. And text amendments and how they. Work together.
Right.
Or what why text amendments are needed, perhaps, when in our plan, we have the 35 foot. This, that, or another thing, is there just more detail in text amendments, but I, yeah, I'm confused too.
Okay, good. Jeff, do you have anything to add to that because or any other further? Need for clarification?
Well, no, that had helped me a lot, too.
Okay, yeah, this is a good, I mean, this is really good, and Kathleen, I guess, thumbs up. You would like me to take some time, Mr. Chairman, if you want, I could just take some time to walk through this.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, so there, this is a. This is a perennial. Area for confusion with citizen planners and planning commissions, it's it's. Quite normal, so. In Maryland, we 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 have zoning authority. But in order to have a zoning ordinance. A jurisdiction has to do a comprehensive plan. And presumably, there's a connection, therefore, between the plan and the zoning. So that the law, which is the zoning. Is premised and based on a collective policy guide, one that the community had a role in understanding. And the legislature has adopted, okay? You're the citizen planners appointed by the the town to prepare the plan. Which is the the basic policy, and you submit your plan to the mayor and council, and they adopt it. Once it's adopted. The most effective way of implementing the plan is to update the zoning map. You don't update the zoning map before you adopt the plan. The plan is just a guide. You know, those land use plan maps, the future plan map is just a guide, it's an expression of what the town might look like in the future. So if we have a category that says. Cottage development or cottage area or or resource conservation, it sends the signal that that's what we want. That's our better basic policy, and it's only a guide. After the plan is adopted. The zoning map is changed. And the zoning map is changed in coordination with the community, it's a comprehensive rezoning in which. Ideally, everyone who might be affected by the zoning changes. Come together and participate, so everyone knows what's the plan, what the what the effect of the zoning would be on their property.
Chris, if I could, one point of clarification, you said after the plan is passed, the zoning map is changed. The plan doesn't change the zoning map, is that correct?
Right, the plan doesn't change the zoning map one bit. The plan is just the just a policy guide, all it is. And where we run into trouble, not we, but you know, we as planners is working in a community. Is to be so specific in a comprehensive plan as to close out the or foreclose the opportunity to benefit from the public. Who have the the rights in property. So the plan is supposed to be general to allow the community to come to terms with the basic policy and write the law in a way. That reflects their individual concerns. So by being really specific in a plan. We are, we were signaling that we know what's best. And we're not open to further deliberations from the community at large. So there's really a a policy point, and that's the comprehensive plan, and then a zoning standpoint. Now, generally speaking, you want to get the plan done, take a breather, and then enter into the zoning framework. Where you deal with the zoning map and the zoning text. Ideally, you do that, but we've been really rushed under the deadline created by the moratorium. And we're proposing that we do with some of the most pressing zoning amendments sooner than later. Okay, so that when, once the plan is. Finished, the town council can right away, go right into adopting some zoning amendments, some zoning text amendments. And that's what, and Cindy, that's your height, especially your height limitation. Because there's, I don't know if there's any more. Significant. Piece of legislation that would affect the looking field of development than that particular item. And if that waited for a year to get adopted. Any proposal that came before you would be approvable. Because the height limit is considerably higher right now than 35 feet. So that's why that particular item I'm suggesting move in parallel with the comprehensive plan, okay? So so that's why on September 25th. Or, you know, leading up to September, September 29th or September 19th, I'd like to have that ordinance before you again. As well as the ordinance dealing with the permitted uses in the. In the in the maritime zone. And the commercial zone, so that those two things are set in place, they're clearly related to your comprehensive plan. The mayor and council would deliberate and decide whether they want to adopt that law. They could even decide that the same night they hold the public hearing on the comprehensive plan, they could hold public hearings on both topics the same night. Now. There are a lot of other types of changes in the zoning ordinance. That would would help implement the plan. But they don't need to be done. Now, in the here and now, to address the issues that the moratorium raises for the the town. And those are things that deal with these accessory apartments, for instance, or. The nature of resource conservation usage, or all the variety of other things, parking. They could, we could take much more time to deliberate and consider those after the comprehensive plan is done. And these key text amendments are in place. Then you could really deliberate and find out what the best solution is for those various things and not hold up the plan. The zoning map itself gets changed through a means called a comprehensive rezoning. And I'm suggesting that the comprehensive rezoning happened really quickly, and that's why I'm suggesting on April 19th. We actually have proposed zoning. Text or zoning map amendments. And they would design redefine the zoning district boundaries to make it look like it could, like it implements the comprehensive plan map. So they would be presented to the mayor and council along with those two or three key text amendments. So just to recap, the plan is is just a guide for the later zoning amendments.
So I believe that there are more key. Amendments involved here, and the resource conservation. District description and related code is certainly one of them. As far as the parking goes, I I. I don't know about that, I don't, but it would be better if we just had the entire draft. Of what code would marry up with our plan so that we could read it and think about it. And then we can decide if the plan works, for one. And for two, we might, I mean, if if you write the code well, Chris, and it reflects our values. We shouldn't have a problem passing it, the problem that we have is when we focus on things that we know our neighbors don't want to happen. And that's when we go around in circles, and that's when we have problems, and that could take forever. And I don't want that resource conservation district hanging out there to receive a bunch of housing. housing while we're going around in circles on some of this stuff.
So what is your specific proposal here?
My specific proposal is that before we set a date for public hearing, we at least have a draft of what our related zoning text amendments would be, so we can understand how our plan is going to work with the code and whether or not we want to go forth with it.
All right. And do we want to get that before we consider any, any code amendments? Are we going to take up Commissioner Greengold's height and maritime district restrictions? Which comes first, the chicken or the egg?
I believe that we should request an extension of the moratorium, and then we should get this done. Get the whole package, have time to read it, and then put it forth so that we're all on the same page. We all understand what's going on. We're not leaving these loose ends flailing around that we, we debate and go in circles about. I think that is the most efficient way to get this done.
You say before the moratorium ends?
I'm saying that we should request an extension of the moratorium, because that's very easy to do.
Well, would you make a motion to that effect, please?
Yeah. I would like to make a motion to request the town council to extend the moratorium.
All right, do we have a second? Okay, hearing no seconds.
I, I, I'm gonna second that. I'm seconding it, please. I'm seconding. I'm sorry, I was on mute. I seconded that emotion, please. But I would also like to add, for how long? We need a, we need a date on how long to extend it for.
All right, so we have a motion, and we have a second discussion. Anyone want to comment on the motion to extend the moratorium indefinitely?
Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Go ahead.
Yep. The moratorium is for the finishing of the comprehensive plan. Now, if I understand correctly, Chris, the comprehensive plan is aspirational, and the text amendments had the legal teeth to make sure what we have aspired to is going to come to pass. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and if I might add, that is why I was asking to get these other two very vital text amendments out and on the floor and, and pretty much voted on by us to send down to the town council as soon as possible. Because I am not sure that there will be an extension made. If we went, went ahead and asked for an extension, there could be a no vote down at the town council level. So we're back to square one. So I hate to, I hate to depend on an extension that may not happen. So that is why I'm concerned that we need to just get those texts, the amendments made by next week, and, and get them reviewed and, and sent to the town council and let them have the public hearing on them.
By next week?
Well, I mean, by next, by the next meeting, I'm sorry. The 25th, Chris? Or no, I'm sorry, I'm, which date? It'd be the 25th, I guess, right? Chris?
Yes, that's correct. So we have three balls in the air right now. We have an extension of the moratorium. We have the draft amendments to the zoning code, and we have the comprehensive plan. Which one do we want to deal with first? We have a motion and a second to extend the moratorium without a definite date for ending it. Is there any discussion of that?
Chairman Brown, I think if we're going to vote on the moratorium, I, I think it just cannot be indefinite, because I think that there is going to be, this is not necessarily, unfortunately, we didn't start out with a longer extension of the moratorium. We went to the, the smaller timeframe. And I think if we just have an indefinite moratorium, it's going to be a lot more unsettling to the, to the public. I think we should have a specific timeframe that we are recommending.
Are you recommending an amendment to the motion? Are you recommending a specific date or timeframe?
I'm recommending a specific timeframe, six months for the extension of the moratorium.
Okay, so we have an amendment to the request to extend the moratorium by six months. Do we have a second on that amendment?
I second it. Can do it in three.
Commissioner Ruckey, did you second that?
Yes, I did second it.
All right, so we have a second on the motion for a six-month extension. All in favor of?
Can we have discussion on that? Can we have discussion on that amendment?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chairman Brown. I'm concerned that that six month, that six month will then add to the nine months, which would make it a 15-month moratorium. The council wouldn't even go for a 12-month moratorium, so they're not going to go for a 15-month moratorium. We have to put forward a moratorium extension that makes sense. And that would possibly be three months, but definitely not a six-month moratorium. That would never fly. That'll go down quickly. They probably won't even go for a three-month moratorium. But I think we should at least try the three-month moratorium. But I think even that is going to be frowned upon.
Okay, Commissioner Ruckey, do you have any comments on that?
To be perfectly honest, I am concerned that we won't get an extension of any kind. That doesn't mean we can't ask while we continue to work towards getting our work done. But I am really concerned that we're not going to get an extension. And certainly, if we ask for an extension, it ought to be as short as reasonably possible for us to get. I'm assuming now what we're talking about, because a comprehensive plan is pretty close to being done. So I presume we're talking about an extension strictly to create and then send forward the text amendments with our comprehensive plan. Is that what we're doing here?
I think that's what's being proposed. I, I would point out, I think if you look at the schedule that Chris put out, that even today, the best case, I think, is what he's outlined, we're talking January to getting the comprehensive plan, or February, getting the comprehensive plan approved by the town council, even, even today. So put that into your calculations here. And I believe Commissioner Larson, did you have any comments?
Well, I agree. I think it's probably politically impossible to get them to extend the moratorium. It's worth asking, but I think we got to work like it's not going to happen. And, and I guess my rudimentary way is that it seems like these two text amendments are the most crucial things to get straightened out, so that when the moratorium does disappear, that we've got the tools that we need to affect what we want.
Okay, and Commissioner Blackwelder, I think you had a comment.
I do. So if we receive the text amendments to the zoning code, as soon as we receive them, we can review them. And as soon as we review them, we can put forward those two amendments. But I would like those in our hands and the entire comprehensive plan as we think it's complete, before we set a date for public hearing. Because what can happen is we can set a date for public hearing, and then it's not, and that's happened a lot. I want time to read it if I'm going to put it forth, and I want to know how it works. And I don't think it's too much to ask, because we have been working very hard and diligently towards getting it done. And we have been doing so under the worst circumstances, because we have, in many cases, not even been afforded the opportunity to read things in advance. And that makes our meetings inefficient. So if Chris can get his part of the job done, and give us the text amendment, and to the zoning code, and to give us the comprehensive plan as we revise, as we have gone over, and show us how our, our meetings have been implemented into the plan, then we would have everything, and everything would go quickly. And, and that's how I would like to do, I would like.
I think quickly is, is an aspirational word. We have 25 pages of, of possible changes that Chris will have to implement, that we have yet to consider tonight. But going back to Commissioner Brought, you had made the motion. Do you want to make any further comments?
Yes, I would like to make. I, I think it's imperative, obviously. I think we have been diligent, and I have, I think we have been, you know, we've, we've scheduled additional work sessions to address, you know, the comprehensive plan and get it completed. But the reality is, that hasn't been the case. And I, although maybe six months is, is too much, maybe there will not be any type of extension of the moratorium. But I think the last thing we want is to not request enough time, and then we find out in three months, we're right back at this place. And I think we have been diligent. So to say, now we're really going to work hard, I, I think we have been really working hard. And either we're going to have to limit our discussion and, you know, debate about things and just, I, I don't know, pedal to the metal and, and, you know, be really fastidious. But I, I do think, I would rather ask for a four-month extension, and they say yes, than to come back and find, oh, we didn't ask for the proper amount of time. And now here we are in the same position again, feeling we're under the gun and we're not going to get it accomplished.
Commissioner Brown, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Lori, I don't disagree with you at all, but when you say text amendments, we've only talked about a couple of them. What, what others could there be? I mean, I'm, you know, I know the plan, but I'm not sure, or maybe, Chris, you need to tell, as to what text amendments we can change to make sure they reflect our plan. So we, we can't agree to do something without knowing exactly which text amendments and how many there are.
We've done that, Jan. It's, it's in the implementation section. There are roughly eight of them. They're right there. They're listed. I think these are the most, including dealing with the resource conservation and the density.
Got you, got you, I'm sorry.
So I think they're there.
Well, Lori said two, I thought.
So Jan, what I'm suggesting is that we see a draft of how we would amend the code.
And what I've, what I've suggested is that at some point, we establish an end date for us sending changes to Chris, so that he can put together the draft, so that we can see all the changes inserted in, in there. So if we can't, if we can't give him all, we can't give him all the changes, then he can't give us the final draft.
So Chairman Brown, okay, I, I agree with you. We, we need to finish our deliberations, which we're about to do, once we get through the implementation chapter.
We need to clear that motion. Lori, we need to clear the motion. Your motion for extension, we need to clear that before we move on. You had a motion, and we haven't cleared that motion.
All right.
The motion was for?
For the extension. We need to clear the extension motion before we move on, but discussion.
We have, we have a motion to amend it for six months. That motion, that a motion to amend has not been voted on. So the motion is to amend the motion for an extension, making it an extension for six months. All in favor of asking or amending Commissioner Blackwelder's motion for an extension, amending it to a term of six months. All in favor?
I would like to propose a?
Wait a second, come on, the discussion is over with. All right, let's, let's move on. We've been one hour into this, tonight's meeting, and we have not gotten into the comprehensive plan. So the motion is before the commission. All in favor of making it a six-month request? Do I hear all in favor?
Aye.
One? All right, here, all opposed?
No.
No. Commissioner Ruckey?
I, I have a procedural question. I seconded the motion, but can I?
You don't have to vote yes. You do not have to vote yes.
We will, we have to consider the motions next, but, all right, so, did you?
I'm a no for that.
Okay, no. And Commissioner Blackwelder, the motion is on the extension time of six months.
I can't, I can't hear Lori.
I would like to amend the motion to say?
Wait, 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 before we amend the motion, we have to vote on the six-month request to amend your motion. So, yes or no for six months?
Yeah.
Yes for six months. Okay, so we have two yeses and three nos. The motion fails. Now, is there any other discussion on the motion to request an extension?
I would like to amend that motion to word it. A request of an extension of three to six months.
Three to six months. Okay, is there any discussion of the vice chairman's motion to make it three to six months?
I, I think that sounds reasonable. And if we come in earlier, on the earlier side, that's even better. But I think we should go for, to try to do it within three months rather than six. And I think we should push for that. And if we finish sooner, I think it's kudos for us.
Great.
Motion is to make, request from the town council, a three to six-month extension of the moratorium. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of making the request for three to six months?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's see, so we have Commissioner Blackwelder is aye, Commissioner Greengold is aye, Commissioner Brought is aye, Commissioner Larson is aye, and Commissioner Ruckey? I'm sorry, your, your mic isn't on.
My, my response is no. And just briefly, let me say that asking for three to six months is the same thing as asking for six months.
Yeah.
And, I mean, come on, folks. So I think three months, I mean, we have eight text amendment, according to Chris. Is there any reason, Chris, I don't know how long these things take to pull together, but we sure don't need months and months added to the comprehensive plan. Three months would be more than adequate. If we can get that, terrific.
Well, I would, I would say before Chris comments, the, the schedule Chris laid out, which you have there in the bar charts, shows completing in February, which is two months after the moratorium. So a three-month extension is essentially asking for one month beyond what the best case that Chris has outlined. Chris, if you want to comment?
Yeah, I guess I would agree with that. And, and the schedule as, as we have it now, has us looking at these text amendments at the next meeting. And, you know, I, I think that's the best we can do. And, and, and setting the public hearing date at the next meeting, which means the public hearing will be roughly 60 days after the, the last meeting.
Chris, can you get us, if we're going to discuss the zoning map and text, forgive me, Chairman Brown, I'm sorry. Can you, you then plan on giving us all eight text Um, can you, you then plan on giving us all eight text amendments before the 25th of August, when we have to discuss them?
On August 20, or August 19th.
Oh, I, I thought that your barcode doesn't even show August 19th.
I know, that's why I was confused.
I, that's why we were referring to the chairman's, uh, schedule, because he added some nuance and reality to it. And it's.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I was confused about which one. Okay.
Uh, but the commission rejected the chairman's schedule, so we're, uh.
Sorry.
Well, we do have a motion on the floor. We had a vote. And, uh, uh, unless somebody changes their vote, uh, we have a, uh, motion to amend the motion, uh, to be three to six months. And we only had one no vote, as I recall. That was Commissioner Rutke. So.
Yes, sir.
Hearing no one change their vote. Uh, we will now vote on the motion to send to the town council a request which Commissioner Blackwelder will write, um, to the town council, uh, asking for a three to six-month, uh, extension of the moratorium. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of sending a request to the town council for an extension of three to six months? Say aye.
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 So unanimous. All right, so we are finished with that discussion. I interrupted Commissioner Rutke. He had some questions for, uh, our administrator.
Yep, Mike. My question to Chris is, if we are going to discuss the zoning map and text changes on the 19th of August, which is a week from now, right? Yeah.
We aren't discussing them. That's when he provides them to the commission. And then we have a meeting on the 25th, a week later. Uh, so we will have a week to look at them.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Now, can I, can I, Chairman Brown, can I ask, Chris?
Does Commissioner Rutke come, finished?
I am finished. I'm totally finished.
All right, Mr. Greengold?
So, Chris, I, again, I'm sorry to reiterate this and ask you over and over again. Are those text amendments then in a configuration that will be able to go directly to the town council to be in a format consistent with putting them in the code as an amendment, as amended change? I mean, is that, is it going to be written up? I don't see Chris anywhere, but I guess he's still there. Is it going to be written up in the correct format? There you are.
Yes.
Um, or do we then have to rewrite? It's, so it's going to be in the format needed to enact, enact a change at the town council level? Okay, that's all.
No, 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 wait a minute. Wait a minute, wait a minute. No, 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 wait.
Sorry, sorry.
They're going to be written up in a way that's clear to you as the decision makers on these and to the public who might read them, what's being amended. But it's the town attorney that will craft them into actual legislation. It's not what I'm going to do. He's going to have the whereas, and then therefore let it be resolved. And he's going to have the, you know, the legal format for in ordinance.
Okay.
You might remember the, the zoning text amendments that dealt with building height. They were very descriptive. It said exactly what section would be changed and how it would be changed. That's how it's going to be.
So, yeah, so then if we can adopt this, it goes forward within the time period? Okay, well, I don't think we can get much quicker than that then, at this point. So, okay, thank you, Chris. I appreciate your comment on that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Brown, one pointed clarification, please. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Are we talking eight text amendments? Are we going to get the full monte, so to speak?
Well, that's the question for our zoning administrator.
Well, that depends on if you're okay with this draft of the implementation chapter that lists them. They're right there. And I was suggesting that they'd be considered immediate-term text amendments and that you would do it concurrently with, or immediately following the adoption of the plan. Um, and. Said that we could have that on the agenda on the 25th, meaning I'll have them to you on the 19th. But you might find that there are some of these that you don't think should be on here, or you might want to add one or two. So that's, you know, when we get to that part of the meeting, we'll have some clarity on that, Jan.
Okay.
Right, so I would ask for some clarification from the commission now. Uh, are we going to proceed with the comprehensive plan? And then consider the zoning map and the zoning text changes? Are we going to proceed, as Commissioner Blackwelder has stated, that everything is on the table first before we approve the plan for public comment? And I would, uh, just make sure you understand, once we put the plan out for public comment, we no longer change the plan, except in response to those public comments. Correct, Chris?
Yes, absolutely.
So I need to know which way you want to go. So, uh, you've heard Commissioner Blackwelder saying that everything needs to be on the table, all the changes, all the texts, all the comprehensive plans, so that we can continue to change it? Or, uh, will we deal with the comprehensive plan, which is a policy document that gives us guidance on what texts and zoning changes we make? And do them sequentially, the comprehensive plan and then the zoning changes? So, um, I guess my motion would be to make it simple that we continue, uh, to complete the comprehensive plan first and then consider the text amendments and the zoning map as proposed by our zoning administrator. Uh, and I would ask the commission to say yes or no to, uh, the plan as we've been, uh, uh, planning to do. Do I have any comments, discussion?
Chairman Brown, I have a, a question.
No kidding.
Are we getting the draft amendments prior to sending the comprehensive plan on? Are, do we, do, are we going to get that, that idea of what we're going to be considering for the draft amendments?
That's what we're trying to decide right now.
Because I can't answer a lot of questions unless I have those, is the problem.
No? That's what we're trying to decide. That's what I'm, I need some guidance on right now. What do we plan? How do we plan to proceed? We can't go in all directions all the time. So.
Agreed.
My proposal is what the zoning administrator has suggested, which is we complete the comprehensive plan. We'll still consider the, uh, two motions that, uh, Commissioner Greengold has proposed at the next meeting for the zoning change to the maritime district and the height limits. Well, that will be on the next agenda. But, uh, do we continue to focus first on the comprehensive plan with the intention of approving it so that it can go out for public comment? The 60-day public comment period can go on and we have a chance of completing it in the year 2021? Or do we, uh, include all the text amendments, all the zoning changes before we approve the comprehensive plan and before the 60-day public comment period, uh, before it can go on to the town council? So I'm proposing, uh, my motion is that we continue comprehensive plan first, zoning map, text changes second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Larson says aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Rutke says aye.
No.
Commissioner Blackwelder says no.
No.
Commissioner Greengold says no. And we're down to Commissioner Brawl. Sorry.
Can, can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
Um, so if we do the, the former plan that we vote on, we take care of the comprehensive plan and we do the zoning as the second part, would there be illumination from Chris after we've submitted the comprehensive plan, uh, in a specific elaboration on those eight amendments that then we would have a greater understanding about? As what, you know, after submitting the comprehensive plan, because we have that 60 days? So would there be an opportunity for you to enlighten us very specifically? Because from what I understand, the comprehensive plan is the, is the broader, the broader stroke. And then the zoning, the more specific amendments are, uh, finite. So would we have some illumination and some under, greater understanding about what those zoning, the impact, the zoning amendment, uh, the, the amendment, the text amendment and the zoning? Would we have that opportunity during that interim?
Mr. Chairman, can I take that question?
Yes, go ahead and take it. And then I want to answer it also.
Okay, so the way the schedule's drafted now, at the next meeting, you would give your final blessing to release the comprehensive plan for public review. It's not an approval. It's simply saying, our work is done for the time being. We're letting the public comment on the plan. That's the first part of that meeting. The second part of the meeting, presumably, would be reviewing these seven, eight, nine zoning text amendments and a new zoning map. Now, once you've released the plan, it's, it's out there for 60 days. This is leading up to a public hearing that will be at least 60 days from August 25th. During that 60-day period, the planning commission will have an opportunity to review and get into details and deliberate on those ordinance amendments. So our next meeting is, is to, is to, you know, set the public hearing date, which means basically saying, okay, this is good enough for the public to see. Let's release it. Okay? And the second part of the meeting is to say, okay, now let's focus on these text amendments that Chris sent us a week before. Okay? And so you have 60 days to sort of deal with those types of things. Even longer, because after 60 days, you'll hold a public hearing and then you're going to get comments coming in. And then you're going to have at least one meeting to deliberate on the comments. And during that po- time, you'll deliberate on the comments and on the text amendments. You know, so the two will run parallel. It'll be very much integrated into your thinking about the plan. That's how it's structured now.
Okay, and if I could add to Commissioner Brawl. Uh, Chris said eight, nine. There'll be as many text amendments and changes as the commission chooses to make. It's not, uh, that maybe eight, maybe nine, maybe a dozen, maybe 25. I don't know. But, uh, as we discussed earlier, the, the commission will shape those text amendments and shape those zoning changes. They'll shape them to be like the comprehensive plan. Apparently, we can shape them to be anything we want, since they don't have to comply with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is a guide. It's a, a roadmap, but it's not a, a, a prison cell that we can't get out of. So is that correct, Chris?
Yeah, that, that's correct. Good analogy.
So, uh, anyway, I hope that answers your question, Commissioner Brawl. If you want to vote.
Yes, I, so in lieu of what's been said, then I, I'm going to vote that we would send the comprehensive plan ahead and then we deliberate and then review the text amendment in greater detail as part two.
Okay.
So.
So a vote of three to two. Uh, the, uh, motion to continue working the comprehensive plan first towards getting it completed and then sent out for public comment of, uh, passes. And that will be our priority. Uh, so we have two things to do. We have a motion to the town council that Commissioner Blackwelder will write about asking for an extension of the moratorium. And we will have, uh, we will continue working on the list of items that you send in, that you bring up for the comprehensive plan. And when we're done with hearing from those, we will vote on whether to make the comprehensive plan public. And following that, we will then start talking about uh, how the text amendments that you desire, uh, get written uh, and are eventually proposed to the town council. All right. So, uh, an hour and a half into our three-hour meeting, uh, I think we're, uh, down to the chairman's list of items. So unless there's any other discussion?
Um.
Commissioner Greengold, hand is up.
Sorry, can you hear me? Okay, so, uh, but I will still be bringing forward the other two that we were discussing earlier. Bring those, I mean, we're going to bring those back at the next meeting just the same, right?
That's what I said, yes.
Okay, okay. That's, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, just to clarify, when will we get a draft of the zoning amendments that we will be looking at that complement the comprehensive plan? When will we see those?
Those, uh, according, according to the schedule that was rejected, uh, we will get those proposed, uh, amendments about a week before our meeting where we'll discuss them, if we have time. Uh, so that's.
Do we all know what those look like before we set the date for our comprehensive plan to public?
Well, you'll have them. You'll have them, that's what I just said. Unless you're, unless you want to set the date for the hearing tonight, um, the next opportunity to set a date for a hearing will be the 25th. You'll receive the zoning changes, uh, the 19th, right, Chris, about?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so by my calendar, 19 comes before 25, so we should have them.
So, okay. That is more palatable to me. We're going to receive the comprehensive plan text amendments, the draft zoning text amendments on the 19th, and then we'll set the hearing on the 25th. Is that how it's going to go?
That's the schedule. Then that's up to the commission. You haven't voted to make, to make it public yet. You get a vote on that. Um, and I'm glad you agree with it, because that's what the commission, uh, decided. Okay, so going to the chairman's list. I just wanted to highlight one paragraph, uh, the beginning of my list, which says, uh, after we set the date for the public hearing, uh, only substantive changes that respond directly to comments received at the public hearing or in writing during the 60-day review period. And we did receive one comment. I think you received it by email. Uh, we'll talk about that at our meeting on the 25th. Um, but only those, only in response to public and other comments, uh, can we make changes to the comprehensive plan. So if you have any other changes, your, or thoughts on it, you need to get them in here so we can, we can put them on the list and discuss them or bring them up at the meeting before we vote on it. Hopefully, on the 25th. But it doesn't have to be on the 25th, if you don't, if you aren't happy, if you aren't ready to go. So, um, the first item on the chairman's list, Commissioner Blackwelder, that's your item, so go ahead. In fact, I think all 26 pages of these, except for one item, uh, that Commissioner Greengold brought up are from Commissioner Blackwelder. So take it away.
Um, are you going to put it up on the screen? Or am I going to, number one, page 13, general use? Is that where you're at, Chairman Brown?
Uh, number one, yes.
Okay, um, this is for the zoning map. Do we want to divide the zoning map in the area of the town center to say RV3, so that we don't have to go through a zoning map procedure? Um, if different uses in the period of 10 years are desired. if different uses in the period of 10 years are desired by the town council?
So is there any discussion? I think the proposal is to add a new zoning category of residential village 3. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we'll have another zoning category. Any discussion on that?
I have a question, Lori. What would be, what would be included in 3? Or you're just saying? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It would, we, we could just leave it as it is. Right now, it's zoned for only single thing houses. The issue that some of the council members have brought up is that they want it to be maybe more commercial than some of the other residential village areas, that they maybe allow somebody to have a shop but not necessarily have to live there or something of that sort. It's just a, a way to designate it so that we can talk about it only in terms of a text amendment to the zoning code and not necessarily have to go through the process doing a plat amendment. I think that area is a little bit different than other RV areas because it is located in the town center.
Okay.
Any other questions? Chris, do you want to make any comments? Okay, hearing none. Is there anyone opposed to this change? Everyone is in favor of this change. Okay? That's what I have to assume. Everyone is in favor. So moving on to item number two.
Item number two is simply receipt. I, I think we scheduled it for the 19th and we will review it when we get it on the 19th. And I just want to verify that.
You mean the 25th?
The 25th. On the 25th, we'll make sure that it's consistent. That's all. That was, that's really just a placeholder to acknowledge that we need to make sure that it's consistent.
Mr. Chairman, I was on mute when you asked if I had any comments about this. I just don't know if the commissioners, I, I'm trying to catch up, understand what the implication of this change is. So I thought I'd turn to our land use map. And I think what, if I remember from the last time, I think what Lori's saying is that, can everyone see this map, by the way? That's, yeah?
I can, yes.
Yeah, good. Lori, can you confirm, is it these yellow parcels that are along between 26th Street and Maryland 260? Is that what you're referring to as RV 3?
Yes.
And how about the ones on the south side of 26th Street?
I would imagine the whole hunk would be RV 3.
And what's the, what's the, how is it different than the other RV districts?
So right now, the residential village requires you to leap and live in any kind of shop you might run. And I think that maybe down the road, we might want to provide the option for somebody to have an art store or some kind of small business that somebody can go to without requiring them to live there.
So the recommendation is that this area that I'm circling here would be more commercial than residential, or at least would allow more commercial uses?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to clarify that. And that's where the commission wants to go. I will change this map to show it as a kind of a different shade of yellow or something like that or orange.
Can I, can I have a, can I have a comment about that first? You know, the original thought, I'm sorry, what, since we're still in the discussion, the original thought about that particular area was that we didn't want to go to that level of commercial because there wasn't any parking. And that if you took it to a level of commercial where the owner wouldn't live there, there were literally, you would, since we don't have Metro or we don't have bus lines along 260, the zone now is by parking and some, by, you know, we, we don't have any parking for it. So I'm concerned that if you redesign now, when we're not really capable of handling more commercial there, that would be doing the town a disservice. Because somebody could literally say, well, I'm going to go ahead and change mine to a dental office, but then he doesn't have enough parking. So I, I don't, I don't know how that works, Chris. How does that work when you don't really have the, you change it, but you don't have the wherewithal to be able to accommodate when they want to actually make a change in their facility? How does that work? I think we talked about-
In practice, the way that would work is if there were strong enough market demand to support that type of use for a use, say, a medical clinic, like you mentioned dental office, dental medical, an investor would buy multiple houses and remove them for a parking lot and you build a building on one part of the development tract.
Okay. Okay, so you had the same parking requirement. So that would be part of it, that you would require them to have the same parking requirement?
I would be conscious of the fact that if you basically upzone these to more of a commercial use, you may lose that kind of character of the small-scale residential gateway into the center of town. It would strike me that a lot of these are probably viable from a commercial standpoint. And it is, you know, your, your basic policy would be to allow the transition of this residential neighborhood to commercial use.
Well, I think, I, yeah, I, I think, I don't know that we need to, it's not necessarily necessary right now. I was thinking of non-top type, not renovate and have an intense use, but more of a neighborhood use. But it's, it's not that, it's not important enough for me if people are not comfortable with it to, you know, try to drive at home. It's just a rezoning that would allow for different uses later down the road after discussion. If we don't rezone it differently, then we're going to have a real hard time making it zoned differently because we're going to have to have a whole process involved. And so that, that's all it was. I, I don't want to presuppose what people might want to allow.
I remember when we discussed it earlier. I know, we had this discussion earlier, even you were on the commission. We had talked about the fact that those cottages were particularly important for the whole feel and flavor of 260 as an entry point into Chesapeake Beach. So I remember Kathleen even bringing that point up. Do you remember that, Kathleen? So I'm concerned about us modifying that at this time. But we've made all these other changes.
All right, so can we ask, ask for the commission to vote on it, all in favor of changing it to an RV 3? Say aye. Hearing none. I assume it's unanimous against. So moving on to number two. Oh, and we've talked about number two is observing that, kicking that to the next meeting. So we're on to number three.
Right.
Um, I, okay. For the, for the comprehensive plan, we're recommending a way of dealing with the flood zone. And my question for you, Chris, is does any of these, does any of this wording imply a town obligation? Because when we build roads and things like that, there is a upkeep obligation. So I just want to make sure that there's no upkeep obligation for something like a, a flood pump or a seawall. Or what is the obligation that's implied in this wording, if there is any? If there's none, that's great.
I, I didn't, I didn't necessarily intend to link them together. It's without question, though, if the town sought to protect part of the, part of the community by building infrastructure, it would have a perpetual responsibility to maintain it, like a pumping station or to elevate a road. It would be, yeah, it would be a, but I, but it's, but that's, that's different than saying the town is building something for a developer, if that's the point you're making. It's, none of this says that the town is going to build something to make a developer developments project more profitable or-
Well, Chris, it says participate. So it has these layers and it says the town, the builder will, will participate. And so I would, that we amend it to say that the builder builds them, not participates, because I don't want to obligate the town to participating with the builder.
Use the word contribute.
Well, it's not even contribute because that implies that the town is responsible for something if they want to build. And that, that's how I read it. I could be wrong in asking the question.
Yes, so I'm sorry, Jan, let me just jump in here. So my, my thinking here is that the town will probably have to adopt a, a vision and a kind of a detailed engineering plan to protect certain parts of the community. And that's going to be a long-term plan that needs to be built in increments. So if someone is coming in to develop or redevelop that puts pressure on that infrastructure, they should contribute to the town's efforts to build and protect the community. In other words, if they're going to build a seawall, they should build it to the town's standards. They should participate in building it for the benefit of the entire community. What I'm saying, in, in fact, that is essentially what happens, although we don't always like to acknowledge it, but the developers do participate in building things that improve the, the quality of life, like infrastructure and drainage and water quality. We say that these are our priorities from infrastructure standpoint. You're going to participate in building things the way we want them, not do your own thing. That's what this message is.
So maybe, Chris, we could change the wording to say therefore developers will be required to adhere to town-approved defenses.
I, I guess that's fine. Or town, town-approved, you know, plans or, you know, I don't know if defense is the right term, but, but I see what you're saying.
It's the same thing that when, when we approve a development like Richfield Station, we require a park or roads or land set aside.
That's right. And, and other examples are recent developments that have installed major drainage and water quality improvements that the town wanted that are protecting the bay. So like as redevelopment happens, we want developers to contribute to the well-being of the community and follow the plan, not, because particularly when it's, we're talking about protecting the town from sea level rise and flooding, we all have to kind of be on the same page generally. So every development or redevelopment has to contribute to, to that implementing that bigger plan.
Isn't that the same thing as we've dealt with on the hillsides up at 25th Street and that area where the town passed an ordinance requiring people who want to change the houses up there, they have to address the hillside breaking down and such?
That's B Street.
Yeah.
Zoning, I mean, yeah, for their housing to be in compliance.
That's right. They, they had to, they had to participate with us and that meant redesigning their storm drain system so they're not sending water over the cliff. So they participated with Public Works to direct their water to where the town wanted it to be. You know, that was a request that they participate with us to improve the quality of life for the community at large.
Right, Chris. So I would rather than participate with us, because that did cost us money too, I would like it to say adhere. Does anybody else agree that it should be adhere rather than participate?
I like that.
Yes, I like that.
I, I, I don't know why we can't just say contribute. I'm still not understand why, why I just say contribute.
Contribute doesn't sound to my mind as a requirement. And adhere means that you, you're going to be-
It should be, it should be a requirement. It should be a requirement. They should not be building huge multi, you know, multi-unit parks and the infrastructure that goes with it.
Right. And as every town, as every resident up on B Street has contributed now out of their own pocket to make this happen, it contribute, it sounds too, as well as participate, they sound too, I guess they're too soft. Adhere is, I think, is more follow the mandate.
So I think we have a consensus on adhere. Is that right? We have Commissioner Larson, we have Commissioner Blackwelder, Commissioner Greengold, if you, oh, you don't agree with adhere. Commissioner Brol, you agree or disagree with adhere?
I want adhere.
All right, so we have a majority. Oh, Commissioner Ruckey.
Oh, sorry, I was on mute. I, I say adhere.
All right, so we can move on to the next item.
Yeah, just made the change in the text. The developers will be required to adhere to town-approved defenses to secure safety and sustainability, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay, the second part of that, my second question to that is, um, the sentence, designing and building flood mitigation measures will be, need to become as customary a part of development process as designing and building streets and stormwater management. And that's for the developer, I imagine. Also effort must be taken. Okay. So I think layer three just referred back to layer two, so that takes care of those. So there's a list in the implementation chapter to deliver, I'm going to have to turn on my light.
Are you on page 25?
I'm on number four of your-
All right, moving on to number four. Chapter 10, implement, implementation, page 92 and 90, 91 and 92 in the draft.
So I just want to make sure that we deliver the modernized list of permitted uses by districts concurrently with our plan. That would be all the, the uses that we've talked about recently that have to do with gaming and all the uses that have to do with tourist homes and any other ones that we would like to include. I think that that is something that could be delivered concurrently with the plan.
So are you going to provide those, that list, or you want Chris to provide that list?
I can write them, I'm, I mean, I can, I'd be happy to propose that list if the commission is comfortable with that.
Chris?
I, I'd be more comfortable doing it and including it in the set of amendments I'm providing, so there's a, I could track this. And that way I can actually have it in front of you on the 19th.
All right, so Chris, Chris will put together a list.
Okay.
Okay.
Five is important. There was a motion to include tourist home in our list of uses and effectively if we allow tourist homes in the maritime district, we would need to know, well, really, we would need to know what density is going to be allowed for any kind of overnight accommodations in the maritime district. So it's a request to ask Chris to prepare what that density, what those density regulation package would be on overnight accommodation in the maritime zone.
So Chris, can you, can you clarify for the commission maybe what the town council voted to amend the definition of tourist homes to include short-term rentals? Short-term rentals implies you have residences in the maritime zone. And the amendment, the zoning amendment that Commissioner Greengold is going to propose is that we don't have residences in the maritime zone, I think. So that's kind of a circular.
Yeah, so to clarify, tourist homes are permitted now in the commercial and maritime zone. They're permitted and they have a set of conditions that attend to them. And the, the kind of the directive or ordinance or resolution that council adopted recently just clarifies the definition that short-term rentals can happen in, in tourist homes. They're, they're one in the same when they're in a commercial zone, because they're, they're commercial use of property. So, yeah, so they're, they're permitted already, so we don't have to make that particular change. I don't quite know about limiting the density. I don't know what, what that refers to or why it's relevant within a commercial or maritime area, since hotels and motels are already permitted there.
I guess that they're permitted, Chris, but there is capacity concerns and density concerns, and there are regulations that limit those things even in commercial property. So what I'm asking is, is what kind of capacity regulations can we use to ensure that that area is overdeveloped too intense?
Well, it's hard in the abstract to answer that, except to say that there are parking requirements now in the code for hotels and tourist homes. And it would be reviewed as part of a site planning process and the, the planning commission would be able to consider the site-specific implications of any development.
So, but our code is talking a lot about reducing parking requirements. So I guess what, what my request would be is that you would come up with something that the density in the maritime zone is a concern of definitely me and many that I know. And you, as planning, you know, as our planning administrator and expert, I think, should be able to provide us with a regulation package, proposals that show us how we can address that area in a way that ensures that we don't overdevelop. And that, that's, that's, I mean, that is your function, that's your expertise, that's something that I would have a very hard doing with my limited knowledge, but it is something that, that I think would be helpful if you provided to us.
That's a, that's a very broad request and that assumes that we've all agreed what is an acceptable level of density. There are a great variety of uses of land in the maritime and commercial uses districts, as you know, it's, but there are only a limited number of properties, of course. You could have a very small tourist home, has no negligible, has a negligible impact, but an incredible, credibly active restaurant that imposes a great deal of impact on the surrounding road system. So I would also say that our zoning standards now have all kinds of parking and lot coverage and, and there are, of course, environmental standards that are, are in place that effectively shape and minimize development. And the 35-foot height limit is going to prevent anything taller than that. What else are you looking for?
Well, it's just that, you know, in the conversation of this tourist home that the council had, it seemed like, you know, that we were talking about a lot of single-room type tourist homes. I, I would just like to understand what we're permitting there is all. It's, once you add overnight accommodations as a permitted use there and we have all those other overnight accommodations across the street, it can get very dense. And I, I'm just curious how that is addressed in various places. I mean, do you have a big swath and say that, um, density for this is this? Or I, I, I know there's a way to, I'm, I'm asking for your expertise and to provide us with some options of how we can get a grip on that area.
Get a grip on parking?
No, on, on intensity. How, how can we make sure that we do not overdevelop that area? What kinds of, and I think.
I have a question.
But.
Yes.
Building capacity is one of them. I think there's.
Commissioner Greengold, do you have a comment? Apparently not, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No. Can you hear me, can you guys hear me?
Finally, yeah.
Okay, sorry. The question I have is maritime area, is that if we allow for tourist homes, you theoretically could build apartment buildings 35 feet high and you could fill it in the maritime area as dense as you want it. So if indeed we don't have a, a limit, we could see, I mean, in California, they have apartment buildings that are tourist homes. And they've turned all these supposedly just normal apartment buildings into short, because it makes more money. So we could see that entire maritime area built up into, instead of, you know, apartments, they're now short-term rentals. And more intense, because with short-term, more, more needs, you have more people using those at one time. So Lori's got a very good point.
Well, what, what do you propose to limit? We've already limited height.
I, I personally want to limit all residential use, including tourist homes, from the maritime area entirely.
Okay, so that's what I was saying in the beginning, is the proposal I believe you're going to make is that residential use not be allowed in the maritime area.
And that would include the tourist home.
Well, tourist homes, short-term rentals is someone lives in the house and then they vacate it for the weekend and let somebody come in and use their house. So you, you, it seems to me there's a conflict there.
And this is, this is where we could shorten our meeting, because, Chris, I think you understand the concern and you can provide us with some options to address that concern.
Can you suggest, can you suggest an option? I mean, there are already things in the zoning code that say a house, these, these tourist homes have to have so many parking spaces, is that correct?
Well, we're trying to remove a lot of that, according to some of our things that we brought, and this is, this is what the code with our plan, because we don't understand how.
I, you know, I could, I could put together a, a lot of things, but I think if, the, the thing that perhaps is most directly related to what's being asked is, is what Cindy said is, and that is, no tourist homes in the maritime district.
Right.
And if that's the case, that's an easy, you know, thing to write. But let's kind of be a little more specific. I've got the map up here. Oops, sorry, had it there for a second, let me.
Yep, it was there.
I think Kathleen took it.
I'm trying to admit I'm needing more interesting. It's ghosted.
Lead it. Well, first, I'm here, so let's, let's talk about this.
Is it in our handout?
Let's talk about this right here. This is the, the draft of the land use section that talks about the maritime commercial recommendations. The goals for this area are promoting diversity of maritime and water-related commercial uses that, that, you know, associated with the long, the historic waterfront, promoting active and vibrant commercial activities at the street level where walking is safe and enjoyable, establishing a public pedestrian access to and along the waterfront area, preserving remaining scenic vistas to the bay. Now, we added this paragraph at the last meeting. "Over-intensification of development in this area is a concern, and assessments of public infrastructure, traffic studies, noise and pollution, and other relevant factors should be carefully evaluated when considering project approvals to avoid adverse impacts." So from a, at a policy level, we're, we've acknowledged that this is an issue. Now, if, you might want to say here that we should study this in more detail to determine what levels of uses and intensities ought to be allowed. I don't know that in the time that we have now that I can write a really thoughtful set of zoning standards to address this. Candidly, I certainly can, I do this work all the time, but this is a, it really requires a, a great deal of kind of consideration of, of what's available, the traffic capacity and all the other aspects of a, of a community's kind of well-being. It, it might be a good thing here to recommend that the town consider a, a set of zoning standards.
And this, yeah, this is, until we can do that, I don't think we should allow.
Chris, are you trying to say, are you, what we have now, we can go in and develop that intensely to have, let's just say, four, three level, well, let's say 35-foot-high condominiums or townhomes intensely in with tourist homes in, in, around the maritime area? And is that something that we think is a good idea around one of the most sensitive, environmentally sensitive areas in the entire town?
No, that's not what the plan says at all. It, it says, "No building should be higher than 35 feet and no building shall be devoted to a residential use." It, so the only thing that can.
But you're saying that tourist, but you're saying tourist is not residential, it's commercial. So you're saying it should be allowed even though people are living there maybe one or two nights instead of two or three years, but I don't think, I don't think it's about that.
I'm not saying that it should be allowed, I'm saying it is allowed now. And, and what I suggested is, if you'd like, we could include in that list of zoning amendments, tourist homes shall be prohibited from the maritime district.
Right.
That's what I'm, that's what I suggested to address your concern. I'm just saying that it is permitted now, I'm not saying it should be permitted now.
Well, that's what I would recommend, is no, no housing be allowed. You can't restrict one without the other, because it's housing, whether or not it's for one, one day or one year, it's still housing.
Yep.
Yeah.
And tourist homes typically are more intense usage.
What about hotels, boutique hotels?
Yeah, I think those need capacity in the regulations, that's, that's, that's the thing, that's why we need to see what kinds of code items you might be recommending, because we don't have the ability to sit here and talk about, and see something, we can work a lot faster.
Chairman Brown, may I comment, please?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Ruckey.
I, I admit that, that I think what Cindy said about simply eliminating residential use, any kind of residential use, I mean, it seems like we're bending over backwards to try and make a tourist home part of, of, you know, usable in the maritime. Why not simply eliminate that totally?
Well, the, the only reason I, I think I brought that up was because the town council just passed a resolution permitting or changing the definition of tourist home to include short-term rentals, which, and short-term rentals are currently, not in the plan that we're proposing, but currently in the existing code allowed in the maritime zone. So we're proposing changes, but.
That doesn't exclude the idea, though, that we shouldn't have that kind of intense housing in that sensitive, environmentally sensitive area. We should eliminate that, we know that it's a matter of time before, you know, it, it gets flooded out, we should just avoid any kind of, time does not, is not an issue here, it's not about timing of how long somebody stays in a place. It should just be eliminated from that whole sensitive, environmentally sensitive area.
Which is what I, I thought your motion that we were going to consider at the next meeting was going to, to send to the town council was, one, about the 35-foot height limit, and two, was about eliminating residential uses in the maritime zone. Is that not correct? Commissioner Greengold, your picture is frozen. Now you're moving.
Now, can you, can see my lips, do, do we have to remove an overlay as well, Chris?
Please repeat that, Cindy.
Do we have to remove an overlay as well?
Yeah, that's the, one of the proposed zoning text amendments is to remove the bonus overlay district.
Okay, okay, thanks, okay, thank you.
Well, so, big picture, you, Chris, writing what you're suggesting and us seeing it is, is a very good thing and it's hard to discuss it without seeing it, so.
Why not just eliminate it, Lori?
I don't mind eliminating it, I, that's fine with me, I.
Isn't that worth the discussion at the next meeting? Isn't that the discussion at the next meeting with the, what Commissioner Greengold is going to propose? All about the maritime zone?
Well, it seems like we're about to, uh, you know, that we've come to some conclusions already.
If somebody wants to make a motion to remove tourist homes from the maritime area, um, I will support it.
Well, then I will move that we remove tourist home from the maritime and town commercial districts.
Okay, do we have a second for that motion?
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Uh, I just, I guess, yeah. Jan added, and in the town commercials center. I was only referring to the maritime area, not the town commercial along to six.
Okay, I was just.
What were you saying, Jan?
I was just reading the rest of the sentence.
Were you just saying maritime or did you also include the town?
I said town commercial because it's in the same sentence.
So did you mean town, did you mean that or just maritime?
Maritime is really what I intended.
I think that's what you meant, maritime. I would go along with maritime.
Okay, so we have a motion to remove tourist homes from the maritime zoning district with an X. Um, as it's being typed in as we speak. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I don't think anyone was opposed except the chairman. Um, so the chairman will be recorded as opposing that change. Uh, moving on to, uh, number six. Adding bread and breakfast establishment. Commissioner Blackwelder, your proposal.
My proposal is to include that, um, highlighted amendment, fully licensed, owner occupied only, just for the, the benefit of the person who reads that and assumes that we are using the modernly accepted definition, which doesn't always require an owner occupied.
Right.
Uh, situation. So I, I, just an amendment that will prevent people from making a mistake.
And that's on the land use table. And, uh, is it possible to bring that table up so people can see what we're talking about?
Uh, yes, just a moment.
I'm sorry, is that owner of the, um, bread and breakfast or owner of the res, of the structure, housing structure? Because you can own the business and rent out the facility. So are you talking about the owner of the structure of the house?
What I'm saying is people read bed and breakfast and you see how it's a conditional use. Some people don't go to the description of our conditional use and say, they just say it's a use. And they think that it's just like most B and Bs are where you can rent the whole house, somebody doesn't live there. We have a lot stipulations in our conditions. And one of them is that the owner lives on the present, premises. So if you bought a house thinking you were going to make a B and B, you weren't going to live in it and didn't do that check, which would be dumb, but there's a lot of young optimistic people that see our town and, and would do that. And so I just, everything we can do to alert somebody from making that mistake, I think we need to add in our code because I think people might naturally make that mistake. So it's just a parentheses qualifying that that's what our code says. If we're not going to remove that from our code, that, that, um, stipulation, then I just want to put it on the land use table so people don't have to go to two places to figure it out.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Okay.
Let's hear a motion.
Um, I make a motion to exclude the parentheses language in the land use table.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
All right, any further discussion?
There's no licensing provision for, uh, bed and breakfast. There is a, a registry, um, program.
Okay. Once again, this is, this is why having whatever code we're proposing in front of us would be very helpful. And so I think all of the code questions we could just skip until we see what kind of code we have.
Okay, we have argued that already and, uh, we've decided. So if we can move on, it is, uh, time is eight 16, uh, and we're down to number six, uh, which is on, I think, page three of page, 30 pages to go tonight. So if we want to keep repeating and going over the same ground over and over again, uh, we will need a six-month extension on the moratorium.
Well, we've asked for one. Okay. We've already gone over number five. That is to make sure that the town committee is included. And so now we are to what I sent over email. Um, I would like to address the Richfield Station property before I address the sustainable community.
Did, did we finish with bed and breakfast?
I think I deferred that. I withdrew it because Chris is providing us with code.
Okay, so that's withdrawn. I'm trying to keep it straight so Sharon can keep her notes together.
Okay.
All right, and number seven, uh, is that where, where you're at?
Yeah.
This is Cindy's, uh, comment from, I guess, previous meetings. I don't know if you're there, Cindy.
Yeah, tell me where we're at.
Number seven.
Number seven, that's what you had asked to have included on, uh, for discussion tonight.
Um, is that the one about the, uh, is that the one that you wrote up, Chris, today?
Yes.
Oh, well, add recommendation in the housing chapter that the town establish a program for grants and/or loans to maintain or upgrade the exterior of the town's historic cottages and homes pre-1945. Now, Chris, you passed out some language.
Yeah.
I think.
A couple minutes before the meeting. I haven't had time to read.
No, I didn't, I didn't pass it out. I just shared it with.
I said, I sent it to everybody.
Oh, okay.
I sent it to everybody for them to read. Uh, it was, uh, very good language on basically, uh, promoting a program's town could actually assist homeowners, um, in, in order to keep their exterior, um, the part of, the exterior part of their house coming down essentially so that it, we retain that historic look and that historic value. The, uh, getting to Chris is that historic design, as you were talking about, because I don't want all the strings attached to that. So what I thought is I've heard announced they do have these programs that, that they set up with low-interest loans or, uh, whatever kind of support that might be available that can help these, especially the low-income, uh, you know, the little cottages where they might have low-income, um, homeowners, they might need help in trying to, there it is right there. Thank you. If you haven't, it's right there on the screen. Uh.
Okay, so this was, this was sent out about 22 minutes before the meeting.
Yeah.
I didn't have time to read it because I was.
I didn't either.
Try and prepare myself for these meetings. So let's take, uh, two minutes here and allow people to read it and think about it for a second.
I can't read it.
Is this something that Chris would draw an overlay for? Is that what you're suggesting, Cindy?
Uh, no, it wouldn't really be an overlay. It would be a program. Chris, isn't it that they just have a program set up that you can qualify for? They have a certain age, have certain needs, and isn't this a program that town set up? And it would be a, uh, you know, just whoever in the town would need it. It wouldn't necessarily be an overlay of certain areas.
And can you clarify where this language would be inserted in the plan?
This would be inserted in the, uh, land use section as the, oh, I'm sorry, the housing section as the last recommendation in the housing section. Um, and anyway, I, I'll show you where that is. I have it embedded in the, the document already. Um, but this is in response to Cindy's comments. And yes, municipalities do from time to time create various programs for providing grants or loans for the restoration of structures, whether historic or to create a, a certain aesthetic or ambiance in a downtown area. The state of Maryland through the Sustainable Communities Program makes funds available to municipalities through a facade enhancement program that, um, is mostly focused on commercial properties, but jurisdiction, communities have applied it to residential properties too, because after all, residential properties are part of the, the character of a, of a, a district, just like commercial properties are. Um, so this is, uh, this expresses the town's, a, a town policy to, uh, consider helping to preserve the, the, the cottage homes, uh, within Chesapeake Beach. And it draws a specific attention to kind of the gateway zone. It says a coordinated approach, for example, could help preserve the cottage character along Chesapeake Beach Road at the approach to Bayside Road and help preserve this unique point of entry into the town for future generations.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, uh, can I ask, is there a motion to include this in the housing section?
I offer a motion to include it in the housing section.
We have a motion. We have a second. I see Jan's lips moving. I presume that's a second.
I'm so sorry.
I'm going to sell my problem over here. Yeah.
I saw that on Ed Sullivan one night.
Okay. She's not good at reading lips, so. And, uh, so we have a motion. We have a second. Uh, if there is any further discussion? No, no, none heard. All in favor of including this in the housing section?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Oh, unanimous, I think. So there's no one opposed? Okay, so moving on.
It was well-written.
What's that?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it was well-written. Yes, thank you, Chris.
All right, so, uh, I, this last thing just below item seven was something we deferred from the last meeting to right before we, uh, make the, uh, comprehensive plan public. So that'll be kicked to the next meeting. So moving on to Commissioner Blackwelder's, uh, list of, uh, items that subsequently sent in after the agenda was put together.
Uh, yeah.
Possible to put that up on the screen. So very detailed. We'll need, uh.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a quick search for it and bring it up.
It is with the package that Sharon sent out. It's right at the end of that package.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't notice that. I, let me look there then. I'll shortcut it.
Sharon's package was, uh, 32 pages long.
No, I, oh, I, I looked at the, the agenda. It's not on the agenda. That's right, because it's not, not part of the agenda. Okay.
Yeah. Thank you to Sharon for making the copies, for sure.
Thank you, Sharon.
Yeah, didn't run out of toner. Yeah.
So are we talking sustainable community designation or what?
I'll do whatever one gets put up first.
Anybody know what day Sharon sent that to us?
Um.
August 5th. I have August, no wait, is that August 5th? No, maybe not. Yeah, it was August 5th, I think.
Oh, I found it. I found it. Um, I found it August 12th, 2021, PZ Agenda.
Lori sent it the 5th.
Yep, I got it. So let me just put it on, on the screen.
All right, so Commissioner Blackwelder, take it away.
Okay, so, uh, I don't know if everybody read about the Sustainable Communities, but it is a designation we draw and it's a lot of funding. And the funding isn't only for housing. It's for all kinds of things. It's for economic development. It's for open space. Um, I'm not sure, but I believe that the whole town, the whole town is designated by the county as a sustainable community. Um, for some reason though, when I clicked on sustainable community, for some reason, um, there's areas of our town that aren't included. And some of these areas really could use that designation because, um, especially in the railway trail area, that legacy grant is a great grant for that area. Um, and there's no, from what I can tell, we qualify for this designation. So I, I would like to move to request that the town include these areas in our sustainable community designation so that we can open up that funding for ourselves. And you can see, here's what it is now. It's kind of redrawn. It doesn't, it doesn't include anywhere in Richfield Station or Bayview Hill or Fishing Creek. It doesn't include the Randall Plus area or the Chesapeake Village area. Um, and you don't have to apply for a grant in all these places, but we do qualify in those areas. And extending that boundary, uh, will open up those options down the road should we want them. And, uh, the legacy grant in particular was something that Melissa did recommend in our walkable community packet. Um, but as this boundary is drawn now, we could not apply for that for the railway trail.
I second the motion.
Chris, can you elaborate on the sustainable communities and who designates them, how that comes about? But we will need your microphone on.
Yeah, it's designated by the, uh, municipality that's participating in the program. Um, it, uh, and then you adopt a plan, an action plan with recommendations to make various improvements among three or four, actually five different, I believe, categories like the environment, housing, land use, transportation, recreation, parks. Um, and it's kind of an action plan. The projects that get funded by the state, um, through various programs, um, have to be within the sustainable community boundary. Um, so making the boundary as large as it possible makes some sense. Um, so the next time the, the town updates its sustainable community plan, it could propose an expansion to the sustainable community boundary, uh, in implementation of this idea.
I'm sorry, Chris, you blocked out for a few minutes.
Oh, I, I guess I, I, did, did everybody else hear me or?
Uh, I did.
Okay.
Yes, I did.
So Jan, in a nutshell, um, we want to define a state of a community area that encompasses all of our priorities. And when it comes time to update that plan, according to state's schedule, we can, uh, change it. And when it comes time to update that plan, according to state's schedule, we can change it. And we can actually probably contact the state and say, we'd like to advance that update process. So I, this is not a, this is something that would, would fit nicely in the comprehensive plan. And I don't see why we wouldn't just do it right away.
Agreed.
All right, so we have a motion to, to, uh, recommend the town seek a sustainable community designation for the entire town? Is that right?
Yeah.
Yes, and I seconded it.
All right, so all in favor?
I have a comment. I have a question, actually.
Go ahead. Commissioner Green go.
Discussion. Um, current strings attached to these grants. A lot of these state grants are, are mandating quid pro quos, you know, well, we want something from you. And I just want to know what they, what they want from us for the money. Do they require, you know, so, so much low income housing? You know, what, what do they require with this?
They, they don't require anything except for dissipation in the program and adopting a, an action plan and, uh, tracking progress. Uh, it's a, it's a very, um, local centric type of program. It's come out of the Hogan administration. It's really cooperative. And it says, you make your own priorities and we will support them. But you have to make priorities. So that's the essence of it. And, um, and I was thinking, maybe if you're okay with it, commissioners, we put it in the implementation section. Seems like the right place for it.
So is, uh, we have a, a committee or a group that is putting a plan together now for the sustainable communities? Is that right, Chris?
I'm not aware that they're, they're...
I don't think they're doing this.
Uh, but there is a sustainable communities committee, uh, that is assembled in order to update the plan from time to time. I think it's on five-year schedule, but I don't know who in town is doing this. And it occurred to me that maybe the county is coordinating with the town, based on what Lori was referring to.
But it would require some committee to put together a plan and set priorities?
Yes, because of the, the program requires that the town have a, a committee of stakeholders that are not just be done by staff, but, but they'd be done by a, a committee of stakeholders in the community.
Okay, well, that shouldn't be a problem because we have plenty of volunteers and plenty of time to do that.
Um, is there any way? A copy of the current action? Can anybody hear me?
Yes, I can.
I'm sorry.
It's you and me, girl.
Right. I think we do this annually, so we've, we've done it a lot of times. Can we have a copy of the current action plan?
Yeah, of course. Um, I'll, I'll check with, uh, Polly. We'll get a copy of her, the commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, so we do have a motion. We have a second to, and, uh, is there, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so we can move on to the next item.
Okay, the next item is, um, this plot of land seems very valuable to me. It's circled about a hundred thousand times. Right now, if you scroll down, it's owned by Richfield Station LLP two. It's, uh, designated as residential by the county. Um, but we all know it as Richfield Station Open Space because it came in with the Richfield Station Residential Planned Community as open space. And right now, I believe that, um, the way it's being recorded legally, that it, uh, is showing that it might be developable, which is inaccurate. And so what I would like to happen is that the town does a little research on this parcel. It's two hundred acres lining Fishing Creek, where we have forests and scenery. And, um, it is a place that nobody wants to be, nobody wants that developed. That is our recreation area. It was planned that way with the residential plan community. It's a very important part of our town. And I want to know what can be developed there right now as it's being recorded legally. And I think that that answer should be nothing. And if there is a error that was made, there are several actions that can be taken to correct that error. But I would like the town to do the necessary research to accurately reflect that area. And so my motion is to request the town to research this two hundred acre plat of land that is very central and significant to our town and figure out what's going on there.
I agree, and it's a huge and beautiful piece of land that we certainly wouldn't want developed.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Uh, all in favor of including a recommendation that the town, eh, what, Lori, investigate or, uh, purchase or what?
It says, request that the town research the history of the plat amendments associated. I can't, I can go to my thing. It's a little off the screen. My motion's right there in writing if everybody wants to read it.
Yeah, if you can scroll down a little bit. But the motion says, uh, research the history of plat amendments associated with the two hundred acre parcel owned by Richfield Station Two Joint Venture LLP in order to determine its legal disposition as it relates to dedicated easements, dedicated open space and remaining development rights, parentheses, if any.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous. Moving on to the next item.
That's the same item. Okay, so this, um... Okay, about the implementation chapter. Can you scroll back just for one second, Chairman Brown, please?
Uh, Chris says the controls.
Oh, thank you. Um, so I do point out this in my very lengthy, actually been, uh, um, implementation chapter edit. But this is the pathways and vistas map from the two thousand and ten comprehensive plan. Um, and you can see in that open space that we were just talking about, there's some, some trails going through that and some other trails, um, listed. And I would like to, um, take this idea, this map, and incorporate what the Walkable Community Advisory Group has done and have a map like this, um, for our town to reference. And I think that we should, should retain some of the things on this map. So I think, I think they're all, um, identified in the WCAG study.
So is this map or the WCAG studies map that you want to include?
Well, I, I, what I, what my motion ends up being in the implementation chapter is to consolidate this with the WCAG, um, study and create a bicycle pedestrian ma- master plan map. Um...
So we're asking Chris to put together a map?
No, I'm asking that wording to be an, an implementation chapter.
Okay, that wording.
To contain this map.
Yeah, is that clear to you, Chris?
Um, yeah, I, it's, it's, she's asking for a statement to be in the, in the implementations section that, um, uh, that says essentially consolidate this long-range map. That's, well, this map was from the previous comprehensive plan with the, the mapping that's in the, um, connectivity study so that it shows a regional, a town-wide pathway and scenic vista, um, vision for the community, essentially. I mean, the wording's not right, but it's not very elegant, but I'll get it.
I proposed the exact wording, so, uh, that's...
Where's that?
In the, further down. I just wanted to, while we were going past that map, I just wanted everybody to see it so they knew what I was talking about. So we can, we can move on. I did propose it and it should be down, down the road some on this. This, um... Already talked this, already talked about that. Already, that's what we're talking about. Okay, um, so we'll get to it, but that's, I just wanted to point out that map for you guys, that it was in the two thousand and ten plan. Um, so these are text amendments directly from Chris's work. Um, basically, this one, I don't want to imply that the railway trail is built because we're not done building it. Um, so that is what that edit was meant to do. Did you guys read the edits or do I need to explain this one?
I read them.
Um, we can go through them, but I'm gonna be very brief. And then if anybody wants clarification, then I'll do it, just, just to save a little bit of time. So that's my first mot- motion, um, amendments to the introduction section, uh, as shown. And the other amendment there, oh, I cross out most notably for the flood plan and I put it in, um, I put it on the same level of importance as some of the other stuff, um, like building out...
Are we moving past the introduction to another section?
No, I mean, I... So it's kind of two, um, two motions, but basically it's just, those are my suggested text amendments. So, um, Chairman Brown, can you suggest?
Does anybody oppose these text amendments?
You mean the, the introduction paragraph?
Yeah.
I have no objection at all.
Hey, hearing no other objections, let's incorporate that and move on to the next subject.
Okay. Okay, um, these are also text amendments. Um, they're just adding districts that we already have, uh, making sure that we don't lose them in translation. We have a residential plan community district, even if we are not renaming Richfield Station, which, um, came in as a residential plan community. Uh, we might want to retain that district information if we go and, um, receive some lands from outside of our boundaries because that's how that Richfield Station came in in the first place. And so I just, um, we have that in our code now. I don't see any reason why we should lose it. Same thing with the growth allocation air, uh, method. We have that in our code now. It's a method that requires, um, an extensive approval process for taking things out of the critical area and letting them be developed. There's percentages and all kinds of stuff. And we do have that now too. So I'm just, um, I think that's, might even be in the existing conditions area of that. Um, but I just want to add them back in because they were left out.
Any comment, Chris?
No, this is just a listing of some of the charac- just the way to characterize the zoning. So if we wanted to add more things, it's fine. It's just a, just a description of what the zoning ordinance does, so, no, why not?
Okay, all right, any, uh, any other discussion? Any, all, is there anybody opposed? All right, so, uh, all in favor, we're moving on to the next item. Intermediate term amendments, immediate term.
Two D was voted against, so that would not be something that got edited.
Wait a minute, say, say that again, Lori?
Two B was, uh, to change the residential village and add the RV three. I think that was a unanimous vote not to do that. So those changes wouldn't be made right here.
Gotcha.
Um, number two, that change will be made because we did vote for the commercial plaza.
Yep.
Um, so it's, uh, adding it to the implementation chapter. And then I just... I crossed this one out because I felt like it was redundant. Um, two D was in a section where we would be editing that part of the code later. I would like to do it sooner. So I took it from the other part of the code, the other, you know, tier of when we were gonna do things, and I added it to the, the more immediate concurrently section. Um, two E, I think that's just editing this implementation chapter to reflect what we voted. And I think that's what that one's for. Um, there is this little section where I say that, um, existing single-family dwelling, single-family residential land use would be grandfathered and permitted by right in those new districts. Uh, that's just something that I wanted to add, just to make sure that it wasn't recreated, but that we allowed what was there, but not necessarily new development of that.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Yes. Um, when you're, in your bulletin, item number three and four, um, has this been in any consideration of the correspondence that we received today from a citizen regarding the, the rezoning of RV, of RV to RV one? Um, we haven't looked at these in, in light of that document, have we?
I have not, and I, I will say that I agree wholeheartedly with that resident. I'm fine with moving that whole area to RV one. That's what I wanted in the first place, but, um, no, I wrote this before her letter. Um, so...
You mean, keep it to RV, keep it to RV, not move it to RV one?
Well, we don't have an RV anymore. We just have a RV one and an R two.
I see.
But she, what she's saying is she doesn't want a bunch of multi-stuff in her neighborhood. She wants it to be RV one. She wants it to be less intense. Um...
Well, she's saying that they're, they're not comparable neighborhoods, that her, her current, her former designation was the, the campground and the original designation of Chesapeake Beach. It isn't, it isn't comparable to, uh, Cox Road, that development.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree with her wholeheartedly. I think that area is, I think all the areas are different and it would be very easy just to make them all different and not swap them into one thing. But, um, what is your suggestion for that, anybody's suggestion for that? I would support her.
I, I support her and I agree, agree with what her point was. And I just wanted to make sure that, uh, what these bulleted items was, was not in conflict and actually, uh, supported her position.
So they are in conflict.
Could you go over that and see where to keep her, the, that resi-? Did you get to see that email, first of all?
Yes, I saw it.
Okay, and, and to keep her... Okay, and, and to keep her where she wants to be in the zoning code, what would that require?
Well, right now she's residential village and essentially she wants to be, um, in a more restrictive zone like the one that's been proposed called RV one.
Right.
She, she wants her zone to be more restrictive than it currently is.
Okay, so, uh, is there any further discussion on her, on, on this resident's proposal to stay RV one? Is anyone opposed to, uh, making that modification to, to make her a happy person?
Well, um, Mr. Chairman, are you talking about, I mean, we can't just change her individual parcel. Are you talking about the entire middle subdivision, everything from 260 north to essentially, um, the, the marsh or up to the, um, the commercial businesses?
Well, what it was before was RV, is that correct? The entire area you're talking about?
It's currently zoned RV, yes.
So, um, and now it's been split up into RV one and RV two?
Yes, that's right, and I could show you the map, maybe that would help us. Oops, wrong document.
That would help, thank you.
Yes, let me, let me get there, just be a moment. Oops. God, I can't wait till we can meet in person.
Well, if you read, uh, excuse me, Commissioner Brown, may I comment?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, if you, if you read the primary example uses for RV two. It says, "Single-family detached with allowance for other housing type compatible with neighborhood character." And, and that's pretty broad. I, I'm, you know, I think it was a leap for her to get to, um, Cox Road and all that intense development up there and think that it was possible in her neighborhood. I don't, I, I don't make that connection.
Okay.
Right, but there is connection, Jan, because what's allowed at Cox Road is gonna be allowed there. It's the same zone.
It says, "Single-family detached in keeping with neighborhood character."
So are you saying that no multi-unit would be allowed on Cox Road? According to how we've done this, again, I know you guys hate it, but this is why we need to see the code.
That's why you wanted RV three. Oh, it's not crazy.
I wanted six RVs, to be honest, but. So we could, you know, allow areas to develop the way that the people wanted them to without affecting the other areas.
Okay, um, this is, and this is a little bit of a, kind of a reminder of where we were. Uh, Jan, you might remember this large area here that I'm circling on the map?
Yes.
Okay, from 30th Street all the way down to 260.
Yep.
That is currently zoned RV, residential village, which allows for a variety of housing types, but mostly single family, but it does allow, under certain conditions, other types of housing.
You're talking the current code?
Yes, the current code. Um, what was, what was done was to, and, and that applied to this area over here too, and this area up here. And what the, and this area. And what the commission decided to do was to make RV, to divide RV into RV one and RV two. RV one is this area, the lighter shade of yellow here and up here. And RV two is what was, used to be RV.
Got it.
Um, okay, and so, so currently RV would allow, if you had enough space, you could do, uh, multifamily, multifamily housing or townhouse community, just like you have here. There's a townhouse community on Cox Road, that little townhouse community. And there's one right here, six houses connected. So you could do something similar if you were able to aggregate enough property to do something, uh, in those areas. As a practical matter, it's most likely to see that type of development on these larger tracts of parcels, right? But that, but that's, that's a distinction. Right now, the only thing that's changed is this lighter shade of area that we call RV one now. And the plan now is that only single-family housing would be allowed in these lighter shade areas. So we have, go back to our chart. Single-family detached housings in RV one. RV two, single-family detached with allowance for other housing types compatible with neighborhood character. And the thinking there is that, um, uh, o- over time, that, well, at some point the town's gonna adopt some design standards and they could be used to guide any type of uses. Um, but remember, the reason why I think the council, the planning commission decided to leave this alone, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but a lot of discussion happened about various types of affordable housing and duplexes and accessory apartments. And you wanted the, the ability to be able to continue to do that, that type of, um, use of land. For instance, the small senior housing.
Right, right.
Center type of thing. That would not be allowed in, in the new RV one. It would be retained as a possibility in RV two.
So are you saying, Chris, that nothing has changed in RV two from what it is currently?
Correct.
Ah, that's what the lady needs to know.
Except that, except that the plan recommends the town adopt design standards. Um, so, you know, potentially things, and her concerns might be addressed through that means.
Well, and, and another thing to consider is that if those areas are zoned the same, if we change the parking requirements to that zone, it changes the parking requirements to the whole zone. So telling her no change might not be true, depending on what we do with parking. Uh, we won't know till we see the code.
May I suggest, um, just for the sake of delivering a plan to the community, that we not change or even continue discussing this particular comment, but we add it to the public record so that when we hold the public hearing in 60 days, we can hear from a variety of people throughout the community. And then put all the comments together and, and make determinations. Because you made this decision based on a reasoned deliberation. Let's stick with it and then open it up for public comment and then go from there.
All right.
Good idea.
Discussion on, uh, Chris's recommendation. All right, all in favor of following Chris's advice?
Aye.
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 Okay, so it's unanimous, we will add her comment to public comments on the, uh, uh, plan that we put forward for public comment and consider it at the hearing after the 60 days. I think that's what you recommended, Chris?
Yes, it'd be part of the, the public hearing record.
Okay. All right, so now we're back to these, uh, in, immediate term text amendments, of which we have, um, a number of them. Are there any discussion on those tech, any, Chris, did you have any observation about those text amendments?
Short-term, you mean?
No, they don't change anything substantively. Um, I have no comments.
Okay, so, all in favor? Aye.
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 All right, moving on to the longer-term text amendments.
Um, that's a nuance, adjusting rather than reducing. Any comments?
That makes sense.
Okay. All right. Um, you guys, we already went over this one, I just crossed it out, but it is placed in the concurrently list.
Which we previously adopted.
Yeah, so, but they're both done.
All right, so.
Wait a minute, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but before we leave that part, the rationale for making adjustments is being proposed to be removed here. Um, and the rationale is to, for, to make, reduce regulatory barriers or in this case, adjust regulatory barriers to the provision of compatible and affordable housing options, such as duplexes, accessory apartments and senior care homes. And that's a pretty substantive change that I, the planning commission hasn't addressed just now.
So it does say, though, "Where practical and helpful towards supporting the goals of this plan." So it doesn't, uh, my idea was, let's not make that necessary, no matter what. Let's allow our general, um, ability to decide when we write the code. Like, as you say, the plan's supposed to be general, so we don't want to put ourselves in a box.
Well, it certainly says, "We're practical and helpful," and I'm not suggesting that that be changed. It's there now. It just, this is the rationale for doing it. So that you're looking at, you're not adjusting regulatory barriers for what? For what purpose? I, what does that say to, what direction does that give to the future planning commission or the mayor and council? There was a specific intent that was behind that recommendation. Um, and the planning commission may decide to remove this, um, but you should at least comment on it and decide, uh, before you just move to the next point. That's all I'm bringing up.
Affordable housing is a goal in the plan. And so I think where practical and helpful, towards supporting the goals in the plan, um, covers that. And I think that if you add to the provisions of compatible and affordable housing options, such as, you know, there might be some places that we don't want to do that. We need to take a look, and this is saying that we are going to do that. Um, and I think we still can when we say, "Where practical and helpful towards supporting the goals of the plan." But, you know, it's not as, it doesn't put us in the same box that the other statement does.
Seems to me that the state requires us to address affordable housing and that this provides a, a place, a placeholder so that it shows that we have thought about it. And if we eliminate affordable housing options, duplexes, et cetera, there's that question.
Chairman Brown, we're not eliminating the option. We're eliminating how we address the option, and we're not even eliminating it. We're just letting ourselves be more practical. And believe me, we have addressed affordable housing a lot in this plan.
Really?
There's a housing chapter that's, any other chapter?
Maybe the, maybe it's the word barrier that is providing the, the restriction here. Maybe it should be adjusting regulatory constraints. Um, the barrier, because a one-size-fits-all doesn't necessarily mean it's a barrier. Maybe it's that, that language right there. Instead of saying, and have it, adjusting regulatory constraints, such as lot area and one-size-fits-all.
Right, I, I think that there's lots of areas where we might want to adjust parking, but we, we might.
Well, that's why I say constraint.
Yeah.
Rather than barrier. And some people might not see the parking as a barrier.
Right, I know. Well, we have this, we have this section in the housing chapter, and this is, it's called obstacles to house. And it's very specific and not general, that tells us that we have to do all this stuff. Um, and I think that in the implementation chapter, uh, where practical about doing all this stuff is a little bit less of a box to be in. That's why.
Because it suggests, uh, the kinds of, in other words, if somebody's reading it, if somebody's reading it, it, it's suggests by being there, if I hear you correctly, uh, the kinds of things that, that could be used for. And you would like it to be more neutral?
Yes, more general. It allows us to do it, but it doesn't make us do it. And it definitely allows us to consider it.
Okay, so if there is no further discussion, uh, the question is whether to include uh, that section which, uh, Commissioner Blackwelder has lined out, which reads, "To the provision of compatible and affordable housing options, such as duplexes, accessory apartments and senior care homes," period. Uh, all in favor of removing that section?
Aye. It does not prevent us from doing that. It just doesn't put us in a box.
We, we finish discussion, um, so.
Okay.
All right, we have one vote in favor of removing it, and.
Did you get my vote? I'm sorry, did you get my, was I unmuted? I said yes.
We can't hear you unless mute is off.
I'm sorry, I didn't know, okay, you, can you, I say yes?
All right, so we have two in favor. And. So I assume the other three are not. So it remains. Those words remain in this longer text, uh, long-term text amendments. Okay, moving on. You can, Chris, if you wouldn't mind scrolling up on, there you go, thank you. I think we're into the town pathways and vistas. Commissioner Blackwelder, this is in one of your.
Um, this is Chris's, um, the edit, I think.
Hello?
Uh, this one we've, we've already talked about.
Yeah, we.
Up above.
Right, we moved that, so we need to scroll down some more. I think down to the towns and pathways, town pathways and vistas.
Um, okay, so this is just what I discussed earlier. Uh, let's make a map and call it the bicycle pedestrian master plan. Um, and then it's, um, uh, below that is a support of what the WCIG did. And it highlights it in implementation, because we do want to implement it. We've already had a committee.
Right.
And so now we want to implement what happened on the committee. And what happened was, we, um, studied, we outreach, we did all the stuff that was in the study and we came up with a priority list and those priorities are highlighted. Um, and so that is what these two amendments are. I don't know if you all have pre-read them?
I have.
Or like to read them now? Jan, do you have any comments on those?
No, I, I mean, no, I, I agree with you, Lori.
Okay, uh, Chris, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wright, go ahead.
What was the bell for? Uh, no, I agree with Lori. Uh, I think it makes, uh, good sense the way it's written. And no, I, I don't have any objection to. And no, I I don't have any objection to it at all.
Okay, Chris, you want to have any comments on this?
No, I mean, if if the planning commission wants to move these priorities right into the the plan document itself, it's just a, it's something I can cut and paste, it's okay.
Okay, so if there is no further discussion, all in favor of including this section from the Walkable Communities Report into the Implementation Section, Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan, would you say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, that looks like unanimous to me, so we can move on to the next proposal. Something above that section on studies and specific plans, or is that right out of the?
Uh, I, this is added to what Chris wrote.
All right. So are we down to park and open space plan?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I think this is mostly a rewording, let me read it real quick to see what. I think it's just making stronger what we recommended with open space. It it moves the idea of neighborhood parks down a bit and places them as an opportunity rather than an outright something that's highlighted above the, some of the other things that we want to do.
Okay, we all see the highlighted changes and the line-outs that Mr. Blackwelder's done. Is there any comment on that? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of making that change?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the next item, community.
That's a typo.
No, that's just a word.
Yeah.
So over to you.
Oh, I moved it down. So you'll see it down below inter-jurisdictional coordination, I felt like that's where it belongs.
Okay. All right, uh, that doesn't seem to be controversial, funding mechanisms.
Uh, that looks like a typo, uh, dramatic, I'll edit, in case, hold on. Oh, this is adding for the public sewer, this is adding, it's, so the the implementation recommendation is that new users are not funded through the general fund of town government. I just added a caveat that says, "In the case of new development, this should remain so." I just added the caveat of, "This should remain so basically only in the case of new development," but it it, the next highlighted section, which says, "However, there are several areas of town that require upgrades to public water and sewer for existing residences, and where contributing funds are required as qualifying factors for receiving grant funding. The town's capital improvement program should be considered." And that's just saying, "We're not going to do this for new development, they're going to pay for their own, but if we're retrofitting water and sewer like we say we want to do, and there's grants available, the town will support those, and sometimes those do need a match of some sort. It's usually not a lot, but I think that that might be the only way we can get that water sewer retrofitted."
Okay.
It says considered, so it doesn't put us in a box, it says it should be considered.
All right, is any discussion? That seems pretty consistent, any objection to that? All right, is that the last one, Lori, or is there more under the conclusions here?
Um, no, that was the last one, I didn't look at the conclusion that that much.
Okay, um, I think you, I hope you saw the email that Chris sent earlier this afternoon about those orphaned pieces of land throughout the town. He had, I thought, a very interesting plat from early on that the town had of what Chesapeake Beach should have looked at. I I focused on the large parkland area that they had originally planned. But in any case, is there anyone that didn't get to see that?
I thought.
Okay.
Me too.
That's something I had, we had talked about in previous meetings a long time ago, and Chris put that together, and I would propose that that be added. Chris said in the Transportation Section, which is fine with me, but that that be added to the Comprehensive Plan Transportation Section. Is there anyone that opposes that? Okay. So that that ends the list that I have of comments. It's, what, 918, or not too late? The next meeting, if you have any other suggestions, changes, as you read through this that you want to make, we'll consider those at the beginning of the next meeting so that we can make a decision on when to set the public hearing or not, up to you. But we'll continue with that. Right now, I have no more changes to suggest, so please send those in if you have any. We'll also consider the motions on the 35-foot height proposal and the Maritime District Proposal, and we'll, we'll have language for the moratorium extension to vote on, to send to the town council, and then we'll start considering the zoning map and zoning text amendments, the remaining zoning map and text amendments that we have that we'll hopefully receive around August 19th. And that will be the substance of the next meeting, unless you have other things you want to add. Okay. That's all I have. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second?
Third?
All in favor? I've raised my hand, but you can't see me, which is, I think, a good thing. Yeah, okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you, good meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, thank you.